Good evening and welcome to City Council Meeting for September 22, 2020. Items listed on our agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more items may be combined, or any item may be removed. This meeting is being conducted under the Governor's directives, beginning with 006, and extended by several others. Limited public attendance is available for this evening's meeting. We have a public comment via call-in, or members of the public may have submitted their comments via email prior to the meeting. And with that, I will call the meeting to order, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, do we have any public announcements?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we'll begin with our first public comment period then. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda. The public comment periods are based on the rules stated in the emergency directives, allowing up to five minutes for each commentator. As always, we ask you be civil and concise in your comments. Again, this is our first public comment period. The phone number is (702) 589-9629.
Yes, I'd like to do public comment, please.
Go ahead.
All right, this is Judy DeShane. I would like to comment on Item 5, the RV zoning. I am not in favor of switching this around. I sent the council my reasons behind it, but I just wanted to reiterate, I am very much against doing this special zoning for these people. The other item is the Item 9, historic preservation. I think having the ad hoc would be good. Maybe it can be rearranged so that it doesn't take so much of the council's time if the committee could get together, iron out what they think is best, and then call the, then have a couple members from the council come in and go through those and then explain their way before it goes to the regular council for approval or disapproval. And it might be easiest if we did it just on a section basis, because if you try and get the whole thing done, invariably, nothing happens. So maybe doing it in sections will make it work better, and it will get accomplished, and we'll at least get something moving on it. And those are my main ones that I'd like to see the council address, if possible, and do something with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? This is our initial public comment period. The phone number is (702) 589-9629 for anyone wishing to speak on items on the agenda Madam City Clerk, do we have emails for public comment?
Yes.
If you would read those then, please.
This is from Laura McCuddy regarding Item Number 5. Nancy Hoffman, President of the Boulder Oaks Community Association Board of Directors, set a poor example for our community by putting up a permanent structure, pergola gazebo. This was purposely done in direct violation of current Boulder city zoning regulations. This amendment has brought forward, has been brought forward by Nancy Hoffman because of her personal agenda to modify city zoning to allow for her existing non-compliant pergola. This was soon repeated by two other board members, Julia Wood, Lot 212, and Thomas Nichtky, Lot 22, who also installed similar permanent structures. Following examples, several other owners in the community also put up non-compliant structures. These structures, which are in violation of city regulations, received both Architecture and Landscaping Committee, along with board approval. Not only was this in violation of zoning regulations, it also violates our CCNR's rule against permanent structures. By giving these approvals, many members of our community had the false impression that these structures were already allowed by the city. When Nancy Hoffman pulled this amendment from the last Planning Commission agenda, she stated it was because a member of the Planning Department staff told her the Planning Commission had received negative comments from the public. Nancy then assigned other board members to intimidate owners in our community into signing a petition in favor of the amendment by misrepresenting the actual purpose of the amendment. If Boulder City doesn't enforce the current zoning requirements on permanent structures, then why is this amendment needed? The next one is also regarding Item Number 5. It is from George and Helen Stanfield. I'm a resident at the Canyon Trail RV Park near Boulder Oaks RV Park. I feel it is unfair that Boulder Oaks is trying to differentiate their RV park from any other RV park in Boulder City. Both parks have a high percentage of renters that reside short and long term, so what's the difference? Why would the city want to give Boulder Oaks special privileges that other RV parks would not be allowed to have? Both RV parks currently have short and long-term rental residents, and they should be treated equally within the same zoning classification. It is well-known that there is a local real estate agent that owns more than 10 rental properties in Boulder Oaks. This same agent also manages the rentals of more than 75 other lots in Boulder Oaks on behalf of their owners. According to the Clark County Assessor's Office, approximately 22% of all of the properties in Boulder Oaks are owned by individuals that own more than one lot. When combined, these statistics show that at least 50% of the properties in Boulder Oaks RV park are renters. Additionally, every lot owner in this park could potentially rent out their lot, which could potentially raise these statistics to 100%. Assessor records also show that one board member also owns a rental lot. Why should Boulder Oaks RV Park be the only one in town allowed to have zoning which allows them designated long-term occupancy status? Whether one rents or owns in an RV park should not matter. In a housing subdivision, it wouldn't matter whether you rent or own, as everyone would have the same rights. All RV parks should fall under the same occupancy duration rules in Boulder City. Otherwise, fair housing discrimination issues would prevail. And that's it for public comment for agenda item.
Thank you. All right, hearing no others for public comment, we will close our initial public comment period. We'll move to approval of the regular agenda. Not in attendance tonight are City Manager and City Attorney. They have phoned into the meeting tonight. Mr. City Manager, are you able to hear me?
Yes, I am, Mayor.
And Mr. City Attorney, are you able to hear me?
Yes, I am, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any changes for the regular agenda, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Staff is requesting to remove Item Numbers 6 and 11A, please.
All right. Mr. City Manager?
No additional changes, Mayor.
Mr. City Attorney?
No further changes.
Counsel? Counselmember Hoskins?
Yes, I would like to remove Item 5.
Any other changes? All right, that would then be approval of the regular agenda with the removal of Items Number 5, 6, and 11A. Any other changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move to approval of the consent agenda. Madam City Clerk?
No changes.
Mr. City Manager?
No changes, Mayor.
And Mr. City Attorney?
No changes.
Thank you. Any changes by counsel on the consent agenda? All right, no changes. Move for approval then, with no changes?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Got a discussion really quick, sorry. On the dais, there was an amendment to the minutes?
Yes.
Did we want to, would you amend the motion to include the changes?
Yes, if someone would like to make that motion.
Do we need to amend the motion on the floor?
No, because the minutes are placed before you to show the changes before adoption. It's included in the motion.
Okay, so I'll move to approve the consent agenda with the minute changes.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Do we have anyone from staff? There's Mr. Armond Trout now.
Ms. Pelletier is on her way down.
Mrs. Pelletier?
Yes, good evening. Diane Pelletier, Boulder City Finance Director. Tonight, we ask your consideration of Bill Number 1885 in ordinance of the City of Boulder City to approve, take your breath here, I ran up the stairs, to approve Agreement Number 18-1808A, an amended and restated option agreement between the City of Boulder City and Silver Peak Solar for lands within the El Dorado Valley, thank goodness. Okay. Silver Peak Solar has an existing option agreement for 276 acres. They are requesting to add an additional 66.12 acres of land to the option area adjacent to the Trans-West Express Substation option and directly west of Boulder Solar 1, Power 1 leasehold. They are also requesting an additional 8.44 acres of non-exclusive access easement is also part of the request, and this maximizes city land use since these are small parcels among solar leased land. And my analogy is like pouring sand among rocks, so it's land that we probably couldn't use for anything else, and they are gonna, they want to lease it. So the amended and restated option agreement incorporates the new parcels and non-exclusive easement with future lease rate established as the average of the two appraisals as required by NRS. So the option payment has also been amended to reflect the new values. It's an increase of $31,930 for calendar year 21 over the original amount of $66,950. So changes made since the bill was introduced on September 8th are two minor changes. The first page of the option agreement, fifth whereas paragraph, the words "city" and "optionee" were inserted at the beginning of the sentence. The words had been omitted previously at the request of the council for Silver Peak as it was believed to be redundant and a continuation of the prior paragraph. They have been reinstated for clarity. The second change was in the Form of Lease, Section 3.1.2. The latter half of the paragraph has been omitted as it was not necessary for the execution of the lease. The language referred to a requirement to exclude the Southwest Gas Line easement and had an incorrect total acreage for the potential lease area. After consulting with the council for Silver Peak, it was determined that that was not necessary and was omitted from the document, and we can answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Just one comment that I had, that I brought up during my briefing yesterday. Some of this is actually planned to, for battery storage, for an area to accommodate battery storage, is that correct?
Yes.
And that is for this company, they're not just building it on speculation, but in conjunction with-
It's for them.
-that project.
Mm-hmm.
And that is going to be located close to the Gentai, or?
That might be better answered by Brock.
They need to place the battery storage facilities on dry land outside of the 100-year floodplain. So it's within the project, the actual connection for the Gentai line likely will run through this area as it makes its jog up towards the substation up north. They're going to share facilities with the Teckron family, but it most likely will be adjacent to the Trans-West Express Terminal site that's there on the left side of the drawing.
And again, as Ms. Pelletier pointed out, this is really infill to existing projects. This really isn't expanding beyond where projects are already built?
That's correct. It's bounded on one side by the Boulder Solar Phase 1 project, on the other side by the Trans-West Express Substation site, as well as the existing transmission lines that crisscross the area in that immediate vicinity.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselmember Foles?
Thank you. A lot of the comments I already had were stated that it was infill, and then there was two minor changes made, but I wanted to bring up something that, if I can get to it real fast, as part of the amendment, and this is more for applied discussion, I think it's on page 280 of the packet, under the memo that's added to the lease agreement, the lease allows for a 30-year lease with two options to renew 10 years each, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so in the memo, the wording says renewal options. Tenant has an option to renew for two 10-year additional periods. Then it says, "The term of the lease may also be extended by the written agreement of the parties." So I just wanted to bring that back kind of as discussion, since, you know, we've just faced something very similar, and 50 years from now, how are they going to deal with this? And that sentence kind of says, all right, well, you do have these two years, two 10 years, but then you can also do something more if you want. I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the council, if there's any changes or discussion you wanted to have about that, you know, since we just dealt with something very similar. If you want to erase that sentence and made it just the two-years period, I'm not sure what, the other leases in the area also have a sentence like that-
They all have-
-also have a 10-year, but then they could do whatever they want after that.
Well, they all have a similar language where the both parties can come to some other arrangement as well. And even if we were to delete the language, that wouldn't stop the city and this party from coming to some other arrangement in 49 years from now.
So I just wanted to bring that to attention. That's 50 years from now, they're going to be dealing with the same thing that we did with a similar lease. Just bringing that up.
Counselmember Bridges?
Are you talking about the airport situation? Okay, now I'm assuming that the lease here does not include a reversion clause or termination clause, that it's, that it would be okay to continue if, if both parties 49 years from now decided that they wanted another 10 years. There is no wording in here that says, after so long, that this reverts back to the city. There is no clauses or legal language in here that states that.
That's correct. The contract does allow us all of our other solar contracts that at the end of the term, they have the option to giving the city the improvements if we want to take them. If we decide we don't want the improvements, they have to remove everything from site. Again, it all depends what state the improvements are in, whether or not the city's going to want to take them on in 50 years if there's still useful life left in them. But unlike the airport where they revert automatically, all of our solar contracts have verbiage that at the end of the term, they either remove everything, or if the city accepts the materials, they can leave them behind and we then operate the facility.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And again, I do believe that these options always need to be looked at carefully. You know, there have been situations in the past where land was put under an option, the option wasn't, well, it was continued, and what that did in effect was deprive the city of revenue for a completed project by allowing another entity simply to keep renewing options and never actually constructing a facility or one of the solar projects. So it is, but I believe this project is on its way, so to speak.
Correct. They're on a very short list, so much so that they're already making inquiries about the permits that they can take out. And in fact, we've even been contacted by other potential parties who may purchase a project afterwards.
All right. And within these leases, if whatever is constructed out there, let's say there is battery storage out there, the end of the lease life, it's found that those batteries are no longer of any use and require replacement, it is still up to the leaseholder to remove that in a safe manner and return the area to the condition that it was prior to the construction?
That's correct. In fact, they even post a guarantee bond to that effect, that they have to restore the site.
All right, so even if they were to go bankrupt, there's a bond out there that would pay for restoration of the site.
Remove and restoration, correct.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion then on Bill Number 1885?
I'll make a motion to approve Bill 1885. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Armond Trout.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Mrs. Pelletier. Okay, we'll move now to Item Number 8. This item is a public hearing. It's regarding the AB legislative bill, AB 73, which was passed last year by the state legislature. It's looking for input, recommendations, review of the homelessness situation here in southern Nevada. Mrs. Callaway?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, and Boulder City residents. I am Julie Callaway, Parks and Recreation Manager, and this is Beth Bonner. She is our citizen representative, and we were both members of the AB 73 Implementation Working Group relating to homeless people experiencing homelessness in Clark County. As you recall, Governor Sisalak approved Assembly Bill 73 in June of 2019, requiring a multi-jurisdictional effort to produce a report on methods to reduce homelessness, along with potential funding sources for Clark County. As you have been made aware through the biweekly meeting updates and council briefings, the AB 73 Working Group has been meeting for the past 11 months to fulfill the October 1, 2020, report deadline, and we're here tonight to present the report. The working group took a high-level view of the current regional framework of homeless prevention and assistance programs to end homelessness in our community. Meetings included presentations from each jurisdiction, community partners, and homeless service providers in Clark County. These presentations included what is currently being offered in Clark County, along with suggestions for improvements to the system that we already have. Two consulting firms were also involved in providing their assessments of the current homeless services in Clark County. All of the backup material from the working group is included in the appendices of the report. This overarching view of homeless services in Clark County revealed that we have a healthy tiered system. It focuses on housing first in conjunction with behavioral health services intended to move individuals to the next step and eventually out of the system. Shelter beds in Clark County total 5,732. With homeless population over 14,000 at any given point in time, the housing shortage is estimated to cost between $46 million and $55 million to close the gap. The working group's collaborative efforts produced the final report before you this evening. The report focuses on the countywide recommendations for methods to reduce homelessness, along with suggestions for potential funding sources. No dedicated funding streams are identified at this point. This high-level view of homelessness in Clark County will offer insight to the legislature as to the current system, along with recommendations for methods to reduce homelessness moving forward. I want to reiterate that this is a comprehensive report concerning Clark County as a whole, and not specific to any one jurisdiction. Now Beth will present the recommendations.
Hello. Thank you for having me today and on this committee. In terms of everything that Julie just went over, there were really six categories, if you will, of- there were really six categories, if you will, of recommendations that were included in the packet. These are a combination of things that are already in place and things that we can expand on to help with the situation. Under the regional oversight recommendation, things included that the state could look at to do would be to establish a regional homeless coordinator. That person would oversee a body of government, local service providers, and private sector businesses to help make recommendations and look at ways to overcome the homeless situation. They would strategically coordinate, plan, implement, programming, and related efforts, all towards reducing homelessness. The other part, under the regional oversight bullet point, it has to do with leveraging private partnerships to assist with solutions in creating a public-private partnership. That's being done in Clark County through some of the agencies that are working with municipalities already. An example of that that's already in play would be the recently approved contract between a local agency for shelter services, housing navigation, and permanent supportive housing. That is an example of something that could be done in that regard. Bullet point number two, housing. The recommendation is to look at expanding all levels of housing within the tiered service delivery system. Three examples that are included are emergency shelters, transitional housing, and permanent supportive housing. The biggest one that is already getting some legs under it is related to moving towards a permanent supportive housing model. That would include intensive case management, long-term services on, say, a ground floor of low-income housing, where folks have immediate access to behavioral health, social services. We've seen this model in other states that have worked very well. Spokane is a good example of that. Excuse me. The third bullet, behavioral health services and intensive case management. This one probably seems like we've been talking about it forever, but to draw focus and to have a joint community recommendation that we need to do something related to behavioral health and the case management that's needed to actually change lives and keep folks sustainable in their own housing. Some of the recommendations under that bullet point relate to maximizing Medicare reimbursement rates to attract more behavioral health professionals to this area and the state. There is a funding issue. It's just not worth some folks to come out and do that component. Expand access to the behavioral healthcare, including substance abuse. Consider a pilot program in partnering with a state and a managed care organization related to the population in need to maintain a continuum of that care. So a lot of times, just in layman's terms, a lot of times if somebody in this population group has a medical issue, it's treated as an emergency situation, and there's no aftercare. There's no follow-up. If that's a long-term condition, there's not a way for somebody to actively stay involved in their health and care to maintain housing. And a lot of times, we've seen, through some of the reporting, it was noted that a medical issue is a high probability for someone in that demographic to experience homelessness more than one time. Fourth bullet, coordination of data. This is a unique one. I think it's specific probably to our region, especially in Clark County with the HMIS system. Anybody that's worked or volunteered in a nonprofit knows that clients need to be tracked in a system. This is to coordinate needs, focus where the needs are. One of the issues that was brought up repeatedly was the lack of integration between the agencies and the software system with the county. You can't, for example, upload and download. So we talked about ways to improve the system. More importantly than that was expanding the access to that data to help both the fire department, police department, hospitals, correctional facilities, homeless service providers, all to be able to collaborate based on that data. Big example would be, somebody comes into a shelter, goes into the housing navigation, they're still homeless, or they're in a maybe weekly rental till they get an apartment available. A lot of times what happens now, when somebody becomes eligible, we can't find them, right? There's difficulty in tracking. This would allow a better sharing of the data with a system improvement. Prevention and intervention is one of the huge components that the group was focusing on. How do we prevent people from becoming homeless in the first place? One of the stats in the report, I believe, that 45% of the homeless population was experiencing homelessness for the first time. You could have a significant impact in repeating those cycles if we can prevent people from becoming homeless in the first place. Some of the things related to that would include maybe finding funds for a diversion program for one-time needs. Somebody is having to move out, say, of a rental because it was sold or whatever the circumstance is, but they go to go to another place and they can't afford the security deposit. That could be a situation where you have an entire family that becomes homeless. And if there was a diversion tool and funding available, that could be prevented. There's other things under prevention, such as rental assistance, basic needs, utilities, emergency assistance. And we feel that this is going to become a greater focus over the next 12 to 24 months as we start seeing some of the impacts of COVID. The last bullet point in this category is affordable housing development and incentives. One of the things we looked at in terms of what are the barriers and why do we? We all know we don't have enough low-income housing across the valley. And we have this population of homeless folks that we're progressing towards a way of finding them and getting them funding to get in a home, but the homes aren't available. And what can we do to improve that? And that comes down to making things available in terms of possibly utilizing funds to support flexible alternatives for building and rehabilitating affordable housing. A good example of that would be if we could find the funding. There's, I'll use North Las Vegas. There's a facility in North Las Vegas that's been shut down for two years. It needs serious rehab. There are a few hundred units sitting vacant because of that. So finding flexibility with some of the funding sources, asking the legislative group to look at some of the NRSs and what barriers there are for the local municipalities to waive some of the requirements in order to promote building and low-income housing. Were there any questions on any of that so far? I know I'm probably talking too fast. All right. The last one? The last section of the recommendation related to funding. So there's a lot of ideas that we shared over 11 weeks, between the presentations and then the discussions that we would have at every one of those meetings. We kind of narrowed down the focus in terms of the recommendation for the legislative body to look at maximizing federal, state, and local funding to provide that builder capacity, which is some of the stuff I was just talking about. Legislative action, changing some of the languages that could be restricting funding opportunities. Two of the other big ones, I'll skip right down to the bottom two, are related to taxes and fees. Fees on new housing, not low income, but new housing developments and construction. And potentially looking at a tax or a fee on professional sporting events. I'll turn it back over to Julie.
The final step in the process is to present the report at a public meeting, and governing bodies will have the option to accept, modify, or reject recommendations. Once accepted and approved by local jurisdictions, it will be forwarded to Assemblywoman Neal for the upcoming legislative session. That concludes our presentation. At this point, staff is recommending opening it up for public hearing.
Thank you. And as Ms. Calloway just mentioned, this is a public hearing. Are there any questions from council at this time regarding the material? Anyone? Mr. Adams?
With regards to affordable housing, is there a definition that has been provided at this time? Or is it more of a concept, or is there an actual definition that we're talking about?
So I have a feeling there's several definitions, but the Help Hope Home website, which is the home website for a lot of Clark County services, as well as our local COC. Affordable housing, housing costs, including utilities that make up more than 30% to 50% of a household's total income, is how you figure affordable housing.
I think a lot of people would realize that they themselves are not living in what would be considered affordable housing conditions.
Correct.
So there is not then, because I know when a lot of people hear the term affordable housing, they, you know, their minds automatically turn to, you know, these ideas of slums or, you know, large, you know, types of living facilities. But that's not the case, and that's not what the definition is.
That is correct.
All right. Because I just want to make sure that that's very clear, because sometimes people get a misconception of what we're talking about here. When what we're talking about is making sure that the housing is attainable.
Correct.
And that people can be sustainable while living in those homes, not so much the type of housing that it is or the proximity to other homes and stuff like that. So-
That is correct.
I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, two things. So this addresses affordable housing and homelessness. And I'm just curious, is it a matter of the mental health care? You know, things I've heard working over at Emergency Aid and dealing with issues of homelessness and homelessness prevention. Of the people, like when they did the homeless count, that don't want to be counted. They don't want to, they don't want to move. They don't want to participate in a home project. And how do you reach those people? How do, you know, how do you count? I know people who have been involved in the physical count. And how do you count the people in the alleys, you know, to that level of homelessness? I mean, the people that we see are typically, some of them, you know, don't consider it homeless. They consider it survival.
So with all due respect, Councilwoman Bridges, I think that folks who, I've heard this more than once. There's people will say, there's a whole group of folks out there. They want to live that way. That is an uneducated opinion of somebody who has not spent a lot of time with these folks. I can tell you through personal experience that the vast majority of them, when they receive the behavioral health support, I think that's where you were going with this.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about, the mental health care.
Substance abuse support, and that, the big one is the mental health. I mean, we saw that right here in Boulder City this past year, where we had a long-term resident who was living in a non-home environment, if you will, who did not want to leave, but after taking the time and care with the task force and partnering with other community partners, I do believe that person was placed in a home. And we all heard via social media and some public comments that that person did not want to have a home. And, you know, that's just one example of how systemically untrue that is. And it really does come down to the intense case management combined with the mental, the behavioral, mental health support and care that a lot of these folks need.
No, I'd like to hear that.
Okay.
No, I understand, and I think that's where I was going. It's that it really is about the mental health care and the drugs and addictions and dealing with some of those issues.
You cannot leave, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, 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 no.
You cannot leave the social service case management aspect out of this equation at all, though, because, you know, as I was mentioning with the permanent supportive housing, that would, that arrangement would be for folks who needed more long-term care as far as having somebody on-site that they can go talk to when they need to. Having somebody on-site that can check in with them and, okay, did you make your appointments this month? Did your prescriptions get refilled? There are examples up in Washington State where this has worked wonderful for folks. So thank you for asking.
Okay. And then two other things. I was disappointed to see the headline in the newspaper that it focused on the $342 million shortfall as opposed to the overall project.
Yeah, but before we go into our perspectives on this, you know, those are just questions right now about the specifics of what's been presented before we do the public hearing.
Okay. And if I could just make one, please. And absolutely, they have to do something about HMIS.
Says somebody who works with HMIS.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. At this time, then, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to make comment during the public hearing? The phone number is 702-589-9629. Again, this is a public hearing regarding the report being prepared in response to Legislative Bill AB 73 on homelessness.
Public hearing?
Hi. This is Deborah Finnegan.
Go ahead.
Can I go ahead? Okay. Hi, this is Deborah Finnegan. Hi. I want to, first of all, thank you for presenting this tonight, ladies. I'm really interested in that data sharing need to be a high priority. I know that Beth had said that, but I just, it would just make, make people that are helping people in situations like Emergency Aid, you know, our staff, to make more informed decisions on a case-to-case basis. And like I think Claudia said, HMIS is, you know, is a big problem. So I just wanted to thank you both for doing all your work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing on AB 73, the report that's being collated at the county level. Anyone wishing to make public comment on the issue of homelessness? The phone number is 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any written comments submitted for the public hearing?
No.
Thank you. All right, we will go ahead, then, and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any other comments on this issue. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. I did just have a couple more questions that came to my mind. I know this is, we're talking regionally here, and so we don't have a lot of the information specific to Boulder City. Do we know how we compare per capita to other areas, say, you know, Las Vegas or Henderson, with what our homeless population looks like in Boulder City? Does it kind of match that? Or, I'm just curious. If we don't have that information, I also understand.
I do not have that information at this time.
Okay. I was just curious, you know, because we are a unique city that has a very different way in which we operate as a city compared to some of the other cities. So I was just curious if that did have any impact or if it was just coincidental or, or not. I was curious, I did ask about this in the briefing. It mentions that up to 14,000 people might experience homelessness in a given year. But it did also cite that we were short 78,000, you know, affordable units to live. I'm, I'm curious how that number is reached at when we're looking at a number close to 14,000. Why is it that we're short 78,000 units for, for housing?
I think a couple of different factors go into play for that, one of which is the number of individuals that will be in a house are counted. I think the other thing is affordable housing in general, we don't have. So we might have some homeless population that are doubling up, that are couch-swapping, hopping, and things like that are taken into consideration.
Also with that, the folks that aren't being counted, I don't know how many of you have been down my end of town where I work, on the North Las Vegas line. There are many, many weeklies, and there are a whole lot of folks living week to week, day to day, that are not in affordable housing. So I do believe there's, although the, the head count, if you will, during one time of the year that they take account in given era, areas. We, and we know where we live, in the desert, they're not, you know, they're not counting everybody. But that aside, another huge amount of folks we see coming in needing other social services are living in these weekly-type motel rooms.
And I think it's real important to note that people who are spending their money on that type of housing, I mean, that's even more money comparably for what they're, they're paying for. So it's, it's even more expensive for them to live in those types of situations than it would be if they had regular permanent housing.
Yes, and it's a vicious cycle. They don't have the, the funds to pay for the medication they may need. And it just, it's, it's a vicious circle in that regard.
And speaking of that, of that cycle, what is the likelihood of somebody once they have experienced homelessness? What is the, the chance that they are going to experience that again? Is that, do we know that?
I do believe that number was 55%.
That sounds about right. It's much worse.
I think that was about 55%. And that would be the more than one time.
And I, I think that's important to note, you know, because I think, again, a lot of people have assumptions of what it means to be homeless, why people are homeless. You know, they see pictures online. You know, the conversation is always a fairly negative portrayal that it's somehow an individual's fault. But you look at the numbers, you know, 45% of the people are there are experiencing their homelessness for the first time. So these are people who were living, who had shelter, who, who lived in a more normal circumstance, who will be experiencing this, you know. So that's, I think, very important to know. 82% of the homeless unaccompanied, like, 82% of homeless unaccompanied youth are unsheltered on any given night. I think that is an incredibly important statistic to, to take note. And that 44% have one or more disabling conditions. So I, I think this idea, it's important for people, because I always get these, these, you know, people who come to me or comment about, did you see these, you know, I saw this homeless person in, in the park in Boulder City, or anything like that. And one of my first questions is, how do you know they were homeless? You know, I think there's, people have an, an image in their head of what this means, and it is nothing actually like that image that has been created. So I, I think it's really important. I do have, it's not that I don't believe that affordable housing is an important step, because I absolutely believe that affordable housing is an obvious problem. You know, not having housing is the resource that these people are lacking. But I do also have some concerns with the idea that we can develop our way out of it, you know, if you will, because that, that kind of seems to be the way in that we, you know, I, I believe I looked at a count that said, you know, we have 14,000 vacant homes, you know. So it's not that the, the supply isn't there, it's that there is a disconnect between people being able to achieve or find a pathway to afford the housing that is currently available. And so there's this huge disconnect between, you know, what is there and, you know, people being able to even achieve that.
You know, there, thank you for saying that. There really are some hurdles that folks may not understand that once someone and/or a family or an individual become homeless for the first time, that to get out of that and into what we were talking about in terms of affordable housing, that person is likely not getting into one of those available homes that you're talking about. That is a home for sale. Somebody who has been homeless is not going to get a loan, even if they have a full-time job, even if that full-time job is a, a middle-income job. It is going to take them some time to access one of those types of homes. Now, for the, the other side of the coin, those that, we cannot forget how important that permanent supporting, I know I've said it probably six times and you think of hearing it, but you cannot forget how important that permanent supportive housing component is to break the cycle of homelessness. Without it, we're just looking at different numbers next year, the year after, the year after. It's only going to grow.
Well, yeah, I was just going to say, one of the recommendations regarding prevention of homelessness is really targeting that first time and/or even avoiding that first-time homelessness so that it could be providing short-term assistance when an emergency happens, where the, where a, a household is deciding whether or not they're going to pay for food or pay for rent. And some of those preventive, short-time, one-time services are exactly one of the recommendations of this report.
And one other question I had was, I, I do notice that there is at least a distinction of unaccompanied youth, but I don't ever see a distinction that where it's talking about just the youth. Is there, is there a distinction between, is unaccompanied or children who might be homeless living, who are with their family? Or is, is that a different count?
So that is a different count. So your unaccompanied youth are your youth that are without any family members, any parental unit. And then there are families with children of which some of those may be of youth age, but they're not going to be double-counted. So they're each individually categorized.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified. At this time, I don't have any other questions. I, I do think this is obviously a very important thing. I think because Boulder City is unique, I, I hope that, you know, when this gets to the legislature, I think what's important is that we be provided the flexibility when it comes, when it does come back and decisions get made there, that cities have some of the flexibilities they need to make sure that they're making the decisions that are appropriate for their community. Because we are such a unique one, I want to make sure that, that we have the flexibility to do so. But I think this is absolutely an important process that, that we need to, to move forward with, because, you know, it sounds like the, the situation has been improving, but for a long time, it, it was a situation that was getting a lot worse. So we can't allow it to, to slide back at all in that way. So I'll end with that.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges?
Thank you. I do want to go back to that $342 million shortfall. Is it your feeling that all of a sudden the, the tax gates open and that money comes out? That we have the, all the resources available, human resources, places to go, things to do? I know it's, it's unlikely that that kind of money just shows up all of a sudden in a check, but...
And it's obviously unlikely, too, that just because that money showed up, immediately we have those services and those facilities available. It would be a process, and it would take, you know, time to put, to put those...
Multiple years.
Yeah.
Not years.
This, this is the long haul.
This is the long haul. Why is Nevada number 47?
It's a good question.
Mm-hmm. Okay. That's where we're going to just, okay. I, I just also, I...
I have a better answer for you on that.
Okay.
We, you know, we could look at...
I'm not talking to Mark.
Sorry. We could look at what this greater community, not Boulder City specifically, you know, what, what we have out there and, and some of the things that can lead to someone, you know, ending up in a situation where they can't afford their rent. We probably have more opportunity than a town in another state that doesn't have some of the entertainment-type activities we have. I, that's just totally personal thought on that.
Okay. And I just wanted to congratulate you guys. This is a tremendous amount of work. I can, I can just look at the data and what's been written. And thank you for your participation in that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I, I too want to thank you both for doing this. Ms. Bonner, you didn't really state what your position was, but you're the comptroller for Catholic Charities down in Las Vegas, so you have a great deal of experience working in this area. And Ms. Callaway, I know that you've been involved in the counts and things like that over the years. So again, I, I really appreciate all the work and time you've put into this. There were many meetings that participation was required for. I do have a little bit of an issue with the process, and this goes more to Mr. Noella, that before these recommendations went to the county body from Boulder City, I would have had an appreciation to have that considered by council, because I believe that the recommendation that came from Boulder City was for more affordable housing. You know, we are a controlled-growth community, so that's a difficult situation. Ms. Bonner, I know that you then provided a number of recommendations, some of those you've spoken to directly this evening. I, I would just like to make a couple of comments that I've seen from serving on boards like the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition, the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority as far as what types of things that they see. This has been talked about for an awfully long time. You know, Councilmember Adams mentioned things are getting better. You know, I have a real concern that with the pandemic, we've been putting off evictions now for six months, seven months. Don't know what that's going to look like. I, I, my fear is that it's going to look very bad. Something that, you know, I, I think you alluded to, if a person has, let's say, a, a medical expense, or perhaps they do lose a job, or the car breaks down, or something like that, and they wind up getting evicted, I think it's important to realize, too, that if that person or that family has just turned out on the streets, they didn't just lose that home. Chances are, they've lost their furniture, their appliances, everything that they may have been accumulating over a period of years generally goes away. If you don't have a place to put it, you're, you're going to lose it. Financially, that is a tremendous blow. And I, I believe that that is what you're getting at, that if people can be prevented from being turned out of their home, that they can recover more quickly. If they don't have that opportunity to maintain their possessions, get back on their feet, get a job, whatever it is, they've suffered not just the loss of their housing, but a loss of the wealth that they've tried to build up over whatever period of time. You know, the, the saying usually is that someone spirals out of control. And I think that's apt for a lot of people, that, you know, you have one thing happen to you, and then you have another thing happen, and another thing happen, and pretty soon, you're out of it. And Ms. Bonner, I know that that is something that is, is kind of missing in our system right now is to get that stopgap in there. And I know emergency aid here in Boulder City, you know, I believe, from talking with folks over there, they are tremendous help in preventing that kind of thing from happening. So I, I think that's a benefit here in Boulder City. You know, how do we expand that out on a wider basis? And case management, you've, you've mentioned, you know, how do you know where that person is or what type of care they've had in the past or what type of benefits they've received in the past? You know, we, we sometimes hear from people that, you know, people are just lazy and they're trying to get benefits. Well, there's no question, there's always going to be people like that. But that's generally not the case for folks. I think it's reflected in the statistics here that if you can get people, you know, keep them in their home, the chances of them getting back on track quickly go way up from if they are turned out on the street. So I think that's an important factor. You know, I've heard it said more than one time that the Clark County Detention Center is the largest mental health facility in Clark County. And that's because a lot of people who do have, you know, mental issues wind up getting arrested and being put in jail. Well, if you think it's expensive going to those, you know, one-night or weekly rental places, take a look at what the taxpayers pay every day that someone's in jail. So that's not a solution either, So that's not a solution either, is to just start locking people up. You know, this is an enormous problem. I, it does seem, and I'll put quotes around that, I guess, that there is an effort here. My concern is that the pandemic is going to have a real impact, because the legislature has asked for this information to be put together. Again, you and all the people that have been involved, I think, have done a great job. But what's going to happen when the legislature starts looking at all the deficits they are next year? So I wish we had, you know, the crystal ball and the magic wand and all that, but again, thank you all for your efforts on this. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Councilmember Foldo?
Sorry, I know we're wrapping this up, but I just had a question. Because of the pandemic, and we don't know yet when evictions will happen, so a lot of, and I see this a little bit now, where it's not so much that they need help paying that last rent, but it's that the house is selling, and they don't have, although they can pay rent, the house is selling, so they have to move out, but they don't have good enough credit to get a new rental. So is there, what, and I can see that happening a lot probably with the pandemic, when people are like, okay, well, we're just going to sell our house because we've lost so much on it, just get rid of it. So what happens in that situation where it's not just, oh, we need another payment because you can stay in the house, but you're being removed from the housing, and you can't get, because of credit or whatever reason, you have your job still, can't find housing?
So there's a couple of different programs that have been mentioned specifically along those lines, landlord mitigation, to try to be able to have agencies speak to landlords on behalf of renters just like that, and explain the situation, maybe even, you know, sublease with them as part of the program, but to provide landlords incentives to take some of these families, like in the case that you're mentioning.
Thank you. Yeah, because I mean, a lot of time it's like, okay, you have thirty or sixty days to find new housing.
Correct.
And that's it, and you know, it's really difficult, especially in our community. Sure, some things might be cheaper somewhere else, but if they already have kids and they have investment in this community already, and they can't find anything here, it's either they leave the community, they're no, or they're homeless.
There's a, one of the sub-working groups for the COC, that board that I'm on, actually one of their things is to, to do that, is to do the landlord mitigation, to try to be able to be that bridge between the renter and the landlord, and try to be able to find those landlords that are willing to, and maybe give them incentives to be able to provide housing in these situations.
Okay. So then are they in touch with many landlords then?
Correct, exactly.
So if someone's looking for something, they have other people that they could.
Correct.
Okay.
That's right. And then all of that information can be found on Help Hope Home website.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Again, thank you very much for your work on this. Hopefully we can make a dent in this problem for all of us next year. Thank you.
So staff is needing acceptance and approval for the report.
Okay. Anyone wishing to make a motion then to accept the report?
I'll make a motion to accept the report. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move to item number nine now, Historic Preservation Committee Goals. Mr. Mays.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. The city council in 2019 had asked the Historic Preservation Committee to develop priorities with respect to historic preservation efforts in the community. The committee, over two meetings in the fall of 2019, developed those priorities with timelines, and it was presented to the city council on September twenty-fourth of 2019, and the council was supportive of those priorities, and they're attached in your packet as Attachment One. At the August twenty-sixth Historic Preservation Committee meeting, the committee approved recommendations to pursue two initiatives, and they're seeking city council support with respect to these two items. First of which is they would like the city to take advantage of a state grant. This is the Commission for Cultural Centers and Historic Preservation Grants administered by the state, the focus of which to rehabilitate historically significant properties within Nevada. They'd like to apply in, it would be probably summer of 2021, once the grant guidelines have been approved, for money to rehabilitate the historic water filtration plant. The STANTEX study had looked at some of the needs for restoration of the facility, and that is also provided in your packet. That combined with costs that would include design, management, and contingency costs would be approximately $500,000. Now, the grant, the state grant, does not require matching contribution from the jurisdiction. However, in talking to SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, they indicated that those grants where jurisdictions are providing funds toward the project are ranked higher than those that are not. And so for the city to be able to move forward with this grant application, city council would need to direct staff with the next CIP budget to budget funds for consideration of rehabilitation of the filtration plant. So that's one item we're looking for council direction on tonight. Secondly, the committee would like to move forward with the creation of an ad hoc committee that would consist of the Historic Preservation Committee members, as well as two members of the city council, the purpose of which would be to review proposed changes to Title Eleven, Chapter Twenty-Seven of the city code, which is the Historic Resources chapter within the city code. These are the regulations concerning the historic district within the community. And so again, they're looking for feedback from the council on this action item. With that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Foldo?
Thank you. And I'm not sure if you had time to research this, but in our, I did ask if we could use RDA money instead of capital improvement money for the water filtration grant if needed.
Yes, it is part of the RDA district, and those funds could be utilized.
Okay. And we have monies in those funds this time that would match any proposed changes as far as what the facility's recommendation was for preserving that building.
Yeah, it would, for the budgetary process, it would be guidance from the council that city staff would, with the next CIP, incorporate this project, and then the council would direct as part of the budget process to use RDA funds for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
With regards to the grant, I know you said that more consideration is given to those who have set aside money for this project. Is there an expectation that that money is then spent on that project, so that the money is being spent and we're receiving this grant? Or is it that we have money, so we're showing that we are willing to spend money on this, but you know, what we could actually do is we receive the grant money and we use that, and we haven't actually had to expend any of our own dollars? Do you understand the question?
I think so, that the city is committed to using those funds, but doesn't necessarily have to if they receive full funding from the state. I do know that the state program is very competitive, and so likely they're going to want to try to spread that money as much as possible among all of the applications they receive, and so that money goes further with applications where the jurisdiction is contributing to it as well.
And then, never mind, it left my head right as I was about to ask, so if it comes back to me.
Any other questions or comments? I would ask what percentage of the total cost might be of interest to SHPO on any project like this for the match?
They couldn't give me a specific percentage, and as they characterized it, it merits a higher consideration in the ranking criteria when the jurisdiction is contributing, but they didn't provide a specific amount. And that will be up to the Commission for Cultural Centers and Historic Preservation to decide.
Okay. And is that part of SHPO, or is that something separate within the state?
It is a commission that is convened to evaluate applications to SHPO for these grant funds.
Do you know, do you know what, how that's constituted, or? I've just never heard of that body before.
Uh huh. Well, from the website, it talks about the members that are on that commission. These include people from throughout the state that have knowledge on historic preservation. They evaluate the applications and provide the recommendations to SHPO. And this is through the authority of, it was established by state law through NRS three-eight-three.
All right. And you know, Councilmember Adams had mentioned, you know, if you show you have the money and don't spend it, I'm just thinking that might be the last grant you get through this program. But you know, Councilmember Foldo has already mentioned that there's the RDA money, the structure is within the RDA. You know, there's been a lot of talk over the years about what might be the use of that building, and how that, that may help with the redevelopment of our historic district. So I feel that that's certainly a worthwhile thing to taking into consideration. You know, I really appreciate the work that the Preservation Committee does in looking at these things, and I know, Mr. Mays, you and Ms. Daniel, Daniel Willis are also looking into these things that previously really wasn't being done. And so I think that's important as well, that we get an understanding of what's available through SHPO, obtaining the CLG status. Last year, certified local government has been a step in that direction, and I think this might be another step in that direction as well. Any other questions or comments specific to this grant program? Well, I would then make a recommendation or a motion for a recommendation that a resolution be developed as far as the council's intent to put money towards this. I think that's what you're looking for from, for the committee here tonight. Is that correct?
Well, it wouldn't necessarily be a resolution. I think it's, it's direction to staff that as we begin the CIP process, budgetary process this year, which will be occurring this fall, that you direct staff to incorporate this project as part of that, as you're evaluating the CIP budget.
All right. Then I will do that as the recommendation that we set or look into both the CIP and the Redevelopment Agency funding for potential match for this grant in relationship to the water filtration plant itself. Anyone wishing to?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And then we would move to the second inquiry from the committee, which is the creation of an ad hoc committee. Any additional information? I think the committee was fairly clear that they would like this committee to consider updates to our current code regarding historic preservation.
Correct. And they envision that this would be a monthly meeting, including two members of the city council, to draft recommended changes to Title Eleven of the city code.
All right. Any questions or comments from council regarding that? Councilmember Hoskins?
I would like to fill that position if possible.
Yeah, I think for this, we are going to need a resolution, so right now, I think what we would be looking at is if we want to go forward with that, that we direct staff to develop a resolution to create this ad hoc committee?
That is correct, similar to the pool ad hoc committee that was created. And so we would come back with that resolution.
Something's beeping. Any questions or comments then regarding a resolution to move forward with creating a committee as recommended by the Preservation Committee? Councilmember Adams?
I'll just add the comment that I think it's a good endeavor for us, because I think it's something that we've been needing to do for quite some time. You know, the longer we wait to look at these ordinances and these codes, the more likely we are to lose more of our history, which I think is already shown in the North Wind study, that we have already diminished our historic value, I think, in some ways. And so I think it's important that now is absolutely an appropriate time if it wasn't yesterday. So I think this is a good direction for the city to go.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Foldo?
I'll just add that I agree with the sentiments made by Councilmember Adams, that this is something that I believe would be a good direction for Boulder City. I think the timing is right, you know, with the movement and the momentum, and we have a lot of preservation going on in our downtown area at this time, so I think it would be appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
I guess my first thought when I read this the first time was yea. It's about time that we're moving in that direction, because it's the thing that I heard the most about when we moved to Boulder City, and then I watched what happened, even though it was private property, what happened with the hospital and demolition permits, and when we were going to actually start drafting policy. And I think it's wonderful that we're moving in that direction.
And as a former member of the Preservation Committee, I know how much effort folks have put into that. I certainly did. That was my reason for wanting to serve on that committee, and it was a tough go. I'll just say that, that trying to do anything with our codes, with how we approach preservation here in Boulder City, the response that was had from the Planning Commission at that time was certainly not what I would expect from a community like this. So I think having a committee like this where council members are involved, as well as members of the Preservation Committee, council members may choose to move this along at a faster pace, and I think when we say faster pace, that means any pace compared to what's happened in the past. So again, I will make a motion then to direct staff to draft a resolution to create this ad hoc committee, as recommended by the Historic Preservation Committee.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any, any other discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Mr. Mays. Bless you. We'll now move to item number ten, the Strategic Plan Update. We have Ms. LaPlante.
If COVID has done anything, it's made me a lot cleaner.
There you go. Wiser and cleaner.
I'd say cleaner.
Okay. Trying to help out.
I appreciate it. All right. So I am back with the Strategic Plan Implementation Action Plan. This is the sixth update. As you may recall, the Implementation Action Plan was approved in 2019, and we are well on our way. We're actually approximately thirty percent of the way into this project, and checking the list off as we go along. So as you can see, approximately thirty percent of each of the five goals have been met so far. We're going to start off with the first goal, which is achieve prudent financial stewardship. Strategy two is important in that it diversifies revenue sources through greater use of grants, self-sustaining funds, and leases. One of the items that we were able to get was the Southern Nevada Public Land Management Act grant request for Hemingway Park expansion. The county agreed to sponsor this and move it forward to BLM. Unfortunately, BLM has only agreed to take up six of the projects, but on the upside, we just found out this week that Commissioner Gibson from Clark County Commission has assured us that he's making this project a priority and is going to assist us in funding. So that's good news on that project that we just received just two days ago. Then we've got the Strategy Nine, which is adopt and integrate best practices into department programs and operations. We've been participating in regular meetings with the Parks and Recs Directors and colleagues from other jurisdictions. This has been really important during COVID specifically, because we're finding out what other communities are doing to keep kids active, keep adults active, and finding out their best practices and making sure that we're aligning with them as much as we can at the same time, following the guidance of the governor's office. Our second goal, invest in infrastructure. Maximizing the use of outside funding sources for infrastructure is an ongoing action step for our Public Works Department. We work to secure annual maintenance funding along with special project requests. Recent requests include annual funding, RTC annual maintenance funding agreements, et cetera. So the good news is that we are continuing to work with RTC to obtain construction funding for various roadway projects. And then on Strategy Five, that is the update to the city's comprehensive asset management plan, including assessment of current conditions. You may be familiar with the utility rate study that was recently done. A workshop was held on September ninth. Once complete, that will be used to update budget forecasting, and just today, an agenda was added to our website for a joint meeting of city council and the Utility Advisory Committee that will occur on October seventh. Manage Growth and Development. Strategy Three, demonstrate adherence to the Controlled Growth Ordinance. We are, we actually presented an annual report demonstrating compliance of the ordinance that was presented on August twenty-fifth. Also, promote the integration of city resources, including airport, golf courses, railroad paths, Lake Mead, and other regional assets. Recently, you heard that the Boulder City Chamber had moved. They've also been discussing with tour operators how to incorporate a Lake Mead slash downtown, historic downtown tour into our repertoire. Number four, promote historic preservation. Strategy Two, develop a historic preservation plan, which we are well on our way. We just actually today uploaded the video by the Nevada Preservation Foundation. It's in rotation on BCTV as well. Preservation Foundation. It's in rotation on BCTV as well as on YouTube. Now, as you remember, we had a meeting in March and approximately 46 people attended and then COVID. That seems to be the storyline. And then COVID. And so we had to put everything on halt, but this was a way to continue to work on this project. So the Nevada Preservation Foundation is seeking input. People can watch the 50 minute online or on BCTV program, learn what's going on, what we've learned so far, and then provide their input. The information being requested includes their phone numbers, their email addresses, and their home addresses so that we can find out where the information is coming from. Because obviously, when you have something on YouTube, it could go out to just about anybody. So we want to make sure that we're making sure that the priority is on what Boulder City residents are interested in. And then promote, on strategy six, promote economic development through historic preservation. As part of the Nevada Preservation Foundation's contract with the city, they will prepare a heritage tourism assessment plan. And then goal five, sustain a high level of public safety services. Again, I can't say enough about how much the fire department and the police department and our courts have done as far as making sure that people are safe during COVID. They've done a phenomenal job. One of the strategies, strategy two is ensure adequate staffing. Of course, we've heard about the, the reserve program really making a robust comeback. In addition to that, the fire department is developing a community risk assessment and standard of coverage document. This will help identify appropriate staffing levels based on community risks and historical incidents. And then in strategy six, communicate and celebrate the low crime rate and other service excellence. One of the neat things that we had recently is the, there was a fundraiser for our K-9 officers, Luna and Lloyd. If you haven't met them, they're absolutely adorable. We did involve the community in a fundraising project. And as a result, we had interviews with local media. And so we're getting the word out about some of the, the wins that we had. Even though we had to wear masks through the interviews, ended up being an excellent way to let folks know some of the great things that are going on within our law enforcement agency. And with that, are there any questions?
Thank you. Questions or comments? I would just like to say, you know, again, thank you for doing these updates for us. You know, a five-year strategic plan is a great idea. And then something like COVID says, ah, we're going to change a few things for you. So, you know, I'm glad to see a lot of these things are staying on track. I know that, you know, you mentioned public safety. They certainly are, are doing everything they can in spite of the extra burden that the COVID pandemic has put on them to see some of these programs through. And, and, you know, I don't want to short the other departments in the city because I know they're all doing the same. Things like the SNPLA money, for those that don't know, and I'm, I'm sure I'm not going to get this right, but it's Southern Nevada whatever. So when BLM sells land, some of that money stays here in Clark County and goes to projects like parks and trails and that type of thing. So that money is, is still coming. But same with RTC funding for the foreseeable future, those funding sources are out there. Again, we don't know how long this pandemic is going to continue. If it continues too for long, we will start to see some impacts to it. But again, thank you for the update on this.
Well, thank you. And if anybody's interested in the full report, it is on bcnv.org/strapplan.
Thank you. All right. We'll move to item number 11 then, appointments to the historic preservation committee. And I believe we have a total of three appointments to make, four appointments to make. And two of those are existing members who have indicated they wish to continue. Is that correct?
Yes. Two are for members whose terms recently expired, and that is Ray Turner and Linda Graham. So they are both interested in reappointment. And then two are for unexpired terms of Alan Goya and Linda Schrick. And those terms were due to expire 8/31/2021. So we need two people appointed for a three-year term, and then two people appointed to fill unexpired terms. So I think to, the best way to do it, to keep it simple, would be to separate it and do the two and two. And then everyone can vote for two.
All right. I think that sounds reasonable. I would go ahead then and nominate Mr. Turner and Mrs. Graham to the three-year terms. They are both existing members and I believe have done an outstanding job. Any other nominations? All right. I will make a motion then to close nominations for those two positions.
That's correct.
All right. Do we have a second for closing that?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Then we will move to the, or the, yeah, the open positions for the unexpired terms. And those would be for approximately 11 months then?
Correct.
All right. Anyone wishing to make nominations for those positions? Councilmember Adams?
Mayor, I would like to nominate Glenn Fain, and I would also like to nominate Mary Ann Wainwright.
Any other nominations for those positions? All right. I'll move to close nominations then.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Something's beeping again.
They're both on. I sent them a text and they're, they're both on.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to item number 12, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no unusual items on this month's reports, and everything is routine.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the city manager's report? All right. We will move to our last public comment period then. During this period of public comment, any issue or topic may be discussed. Again, there is a five-minute limit on the comment period. And as always, we ask speakers to be concise and civil. Again, anyone, anyone wishing to speak in the last public comment period? The phone
Public comment?
Public comment period.
Public comment?
Yes. My name is Glenn Fain. I'd just like to make a quick comment. I'd like to thank the council for appointing me to the historic preservation committee. And I'll do my best to keep Boulder City a historic Boulder City. Thank you again.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in our final public comment period? The phone number is
Public comment?
Yes. I'd like to make public comment, please.
Go ahead.
All right. This is Judy DeShane calling. And I am glad that the council allocated the money for emergency aid for the next couple of months because I checked with someone there this week, and they have gone through a lot of money, over $100,000 in helping with rent and mortgage payments. So I think we should keep that up because it does help people from being evicted for, and winding up having to find someplace else to live. So I think that is a very good program. And I want to thank the council for thinking of emergency aid last meeting and putting that money up for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam city clerk, were there any written comments that were submitted? If you'd like to go ahead with those then, please.
This is from Sharon Newby. Boulder City residents are very disturbed by the behavior of our top administrators. The city manager and city attorney are making the process difficult. The game playing is below them. I think we would all like this to be completed as soon as possible. Next is from Cameo Stancliff. I would like to ask a question as to why there is a state of Nevada DMV office located in Laughlin that is open to only Laughlin residents Monday through Friday with full services offered when there are only 7,000 residents there. And Boulder City, 15,000 residents, does not have any type of DMV services offered any day of the week during COVID-19. How do we get a DMV in Boulder City to serve twice the amount of residents? Please advise. And this one is from Tanya Vici. I am disgusted by the actions of our mayor and Tracy Folda and Judy Hoskins. Shame on all of you. Do you think the people of Boulder City are this dumb? Challenging someone's mental health incompetence looks like a ploy to fire them and get out of paying a severance package. It is a bullying move and one that only furthers the stigma for those who have physical limitations within the workplace or mental wellness challenges. It is no different than not hiring someone or firing someone based on sex, race, or sexual preference. Everyone is well aware of who is doing the harassment in city hall. After all, Judy Hoskins had to call someone about liking my Facebook post. There are so many other examples that I don't have time to name them here. Stop the bullying and resign. The term at will doesn't mean you can ignore federal employment laws. You work for the, for the people and you, you three have continued to be a disappointment to the service of Boulder City, and you three are a financial liability to the city. Shame on you. By the way, Tracy Folda and the mayor still have not replied to my emails. And that concludes the public, written, the submitted public comments.
Thank you. And I would just like to say I've yet to receive an email from Ms. Vici. But we will continue with our public comment period. For anyone wishing to call in, the
Public comment?
Hello, Russell Nelson calling in.
Go ahead.
I'd like to know why my comment is not being read that I submitted earlier today.
What's your name?
Russ Nelson.
I don't know, Mr. Nelson, but Phil, I didn't receive it, but go ahead.
No, I will report the actions to city staff, and I will submit a formal report to the city council members of my comments.
You do have an opportunity to speak now if you'd like to, sir.
Yes, this is Tyson Smith. I understand the mayor's not getting emails. I was just wondering if we could get a proper email address so we can get responses for him and the rest of council. That's my comment. Thank you.
I believe that all emails for all council members are listed on the city website. But I'll, I'll make, I'll, I'll stop by and see Mr. Smith and, and drop him off a business card.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
I'll pay you one for Tracy Folda also.
Do you want me to just answer?
No, just, I would like the one from her to her property email address because I haven't been responded to either.
First initial, last name at bcnv.org.
Okay. I'll send another one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? Phone number is 702-589-9629.
And Mayor, I do not have a, a written public comment from Mr. Nelson.
Again, I know that sometimes I've certainly done it myself where you believe an email's been sent where you wanted it and it didn't get there, so.
I'll check, let me check, let me check my junk mail real quick because I don't, I want to be sure that
Certainly.
it's not in my junk folder.
Anyone else wishing to call in? The phone number is 702-
Yeah, Russell Nelson. I'll read my comment now. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Nelson.
The city manager and city attorney need to stop being cowards and come out from hiding. The city claims, the city attorney claims to be in quarantine out of state. If that is true, then why hasn't he informed the city officials of his location? Is he lying to all of us? Is he hiding like a coward to avoid being served legal documents? He is the city attorney. He should man up and receive the legal documents. He has made a mockery of the judicial system and has brought utter disrespect to the office he holds. Any other city employee would have been fired for the, for the conduct, conduct that these two have engaged in while collecting high salaries and not showing up to work. Where does the city manager live? Where does the city manager live? His contract requires him to live in Boulder City. The processor has been to his house in Boulder and a home in Summerlin. He's nowhere to be found. Don't believe they claim that they are sick and can't come to the office. It's all lies. They won't tell the council or anyone else where they are located. You can be sick and let the council know your location, but they refuse to do that. The question has been asked, why can't their attorneys accept the legal documents from the processor? The answer is because their attorney has been instructed by Mr. Neola and Mr. Morris to refuse the legal documents from the processor. These cowardly acts are costing the city and taxpayer more money. I also want an investigation into all staff emails and text messages from all city communications. I believe the city clerk knows the locations of the city manager and city attorney. I also believe the city clerk is working against the city in this matter by providing information to the attorney for Neola and Morris that they would not otherwise be privy to. I believe the city clerk's job should be under investigation also. You can run and hide like guilty criminals avoiding the law, but eventually you'll have to turn up and face the consequences. Their actions are ground for immediate termination of the contract. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And this is our final public comment period.
Public comment.
Yes, am I on?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, this is Matt DiTeresa. I just wanted to comment on the current drama at City Hall concerning the city manager and the city attorney, and a lot of people criticizing the mayor and the majority of the council for addressing these issues, even though that is precisely why many of us voted for them. You know, we've, we've known for a long time that these sweetheart employment contracts were going to have to be addressed at some point and corrected. I mean, it called out for correction, and the mayor and the majority of the council are doing exactly that, exactly what we elected them for. You know, we, we've gone through with the last council, the pipeline to nowhere, a city administrator sleeping in a city building. You know, it just went on and on and on, and I think that our new council is addressing the corruption and the nepotism at City Hall. And I just wanted to say that's exactly why I voted for them, and I'm happy that they're, they're addressing these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is our final public comment period. This is the final public comment period. All right, hearing no other comments, we will close the public comment period and move to our last item, council reports. I think I started the other side last time, so we'll start with Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. The Board of Health, Health District, we did hold the town hall meeting for a discussion of what our next chief health officer should look like. It was, I want to say a success. I wish more people maybe had participated, but I think, you know, a lot of these, you know, using the digital methods just isn't quite as, just doesn't allow for the same opportunity when people can actually show up to a place to have that same discussion. But it was very valuable, I think. There's a lot of good conversation had there. We will be discussing that at our upcoming meeting this Thursday, and then also later this afternoon on, or later that afternoon on that same Thursday, we will have a Nevada League of Cities meetings. I think one of the topics of discussion will be the, a digital version of the annual meeting rather than having the yearly conference, so we'll be discussing that. And then on another note, on Thursday, I learned of the passing of Terry Goodkind. And for those of you who are unfamiliar, Mr. Goodkind was an acclaimed author, probably best known for his fantasy adventure series, The Sword of Truth, but he was also a resident of Boulder City, at least for some time. If you're anything like me, growing up a little bit of a nerd, playing games like Dungeons and Dragons, Magic the Gathering, you were likely very familiar with his work, even if you had never picked up one of his books. And while being an accomplished author is certainly an achievement in and of itself, I think most notable of his achievement was that Mr. Goodkind was someone who had been diagnosed with dyslexia, and it had initially dissuaded him from pursuing his passion for storytelling. And I think his accomplishments exemplify that our capabilities and limitations are not what make us weak, but rather they are what make us unique, for they are what defines us. So if anyone out there has a passion, they feel ill-prepared or unequipped to pursue, pursue it nonetheless. One may not find fame or fortune by doing so, but the fulfillment you will find will last with you a lifetime, so my condolences to Mr. Goodkind and his friends and family.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Thank you. See, I have a couple things. Attended the Southern Nevada Water Authority and learned that we had received, they had received acknowledgement by the construction industry and engineering industry on the low lake level pumping station. It's pretty miraculous and amazing how, how it was built and it came in under budget. Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition, today, they're working on a new name, format, rules, and an interlocal agreement along with the issues that'll be focused. They've made a lot of progress so far, and I don't think it's going to be very long before we're going to see the drafts, the final versions of all of that, possibly called the Southern Nevada Council of Governments, but still fulfilling the same role that it, that's required for NRS. Emergency aid, I do want to thank the mayor, and I want to thank everyone for insisting on giving emergency aid $50,000. I found out two days after we had had our meeting that the CHAPS grant, the $103,000 grant that they received, would not cover municipal utilities, which was quite, quite a surprise, because a quarter of that money was relegated for utility funds. And finally, I, emergency aid does have funding to help residents of the community with up to nine months assistance and paying their rent. Nobody should be evicted in Boulder City because they can't pay rent. And if you haven't paid rent since last March or April, you can come, make an appointment to go to emergency aid and, and sign up to have your rent paid for you. Utilities, also, there's lots of food in the pantry. It's a great asset for Boulder City. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I visited the animal shelter and took some sheets over that were left over from my hospital guns that I made for the nursing homes, and they use them there to transport the animals. Anne showed me all the food that has been donated, even prescription food for the animals, and so there's no animal in Boulder City that should go hungry. And so I would like to thank all of the people who actually donated and caused this to happen, and I thank the animal shelter staff for all that they do, and that they're very caring for the animals. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. Clark County School District has expanded their lunch and breakfast programs to all students ages 12 to 18 again, so you do not have to be just a student of CCSD to receive the lunch program. Also, some families may receive, if you are on the free lunch, free lunch program, then you may be receiving a card in the mail, which would allow you to, it's an EBIT card that you could purchase food with for your children. So if you see something like that in the mail, it's a one-time distribution, and that money would be used for food, for food that was missed during the shutdown. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Constitution Week. What a surprise here in America, we're celebrating our Constitution. I want to thank the Daughters of the American Revolution for having asked me for a proclamation. Deputy City Clerk Tammy McKay prepared that for me last week and got that sent to the Daughters of American Revolution. Again, this country has been celebrating our Constitution for over 200 years now, and we do a good job with it, so great to celebrate that once in a while. Sort of along the same lines is our census, okay? We as Americans need to be counted. We're coming down to perhaps the last week or not, not quite sure yet because of some court cases, but potentially this is the last week to be counted. The figures that I've seen say that if you are not counted, you just lost $13,000 for the next 10 years for the state of Nevada. That's money that goes to our schools, it helps our seniors, it helps build our roads, it does all of those things. It only takes a few minutes, honestly. There's very little personal information that you give up, and you can go to 2020census.gov, and again, 10 questions, you should be done with being counted and bringing some much-needed revenue to the state of Nevada. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming this evening.